Good morning. The time is now 9:33 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of January 12, 2021, is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020, State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, may I please have a motion to move the agenda?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Lipton?
Aye.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly? Absent, I believe we are expecting her. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, whom you have just heard, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn, if you do the honors.
I will, and it is an honor. I will introduce the members of the State Board to you. Dr. Cassandra Albridge is the Board's President from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh, the Board's Vice President from Saginaw. Mr. Tom McMillan, Board's Treasurer from Oakland Township. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, the NASB delegate from Southfield. That's the Board's Association, National Association of State Boards of Education. Dr. Judy Pritchett is co-chair, well, co-chair of the Legislative Committee, and she's from Washington Township. Ms. Nikki Snyder is Legislative Committee member from Dexter. And our two new board members who we welcome to their first meeting, Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton from Huntington Woods and Mr. Jason Strahorn from Novi. Ms. Brandy Johnson is here at the board table representing the governor. She's the Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce. And Mr. Owen Bondano is this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year. He teaches English Language Arts at Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. First order of business today is the ceremonial swearing-in of Ellen Cogan-Lipton and Jason Strahorn, our new board members. It's the Board's custom to have a ceremonial swearing-in during the first official meeting of newly elected board members. Ellen Cogan-Lipton and Jason Strahorn were elected by the voters during the general election on November 3, 2020. Their terms of office began on January 1, 2021. Both have been officially sworn in prior to today. We'll do consecutive ceremonial swearing-ins now. Ms. Lipton, will you please repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Ellen Lipton.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the Office of State Board of Education?
Of the Office of State Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mr. Strahorn, you please repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Jason Strahorn.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the Office of the State Board of Education?
Of the Office of the State Board of Education?
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Congratulations to you as well. Congratulations to both of our new board members. We welcome you. We're looking forward to your unique contribution.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is election of State Board of Education officers for 2021, 2022. Each odd year, according to the states, according to our bylaws, our State Board of Education bylaws, State Board of Education members elect officers for President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and NASB delegate, that is to say, the delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. We will do this in that order. We accept all of the nominations for a given office. I will ask if nominees accept their nominations. We will then vote office by office, roll forward one by one through the five offices. If I could, please, nominations are in order for the Office of President. Are there any nominations for the Office of President?
Dr. Rice, if I may, I would like to nominate Dr. Cassandra Albridge.
We have a nomination for Dr. Albridge. Do we have any, thank you, Dr. Pugh, do we have any other nominations for the Office of President? Hearing none. Dr. Albridge, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay, very good. Hearing and seeing no other nominations. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to do a roll call vote.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous approval.
Congratulations, President Albridge. Nominations are in order for the Office of Vice President. If I could please have nomination for Vice President?
Dr. Rice, I would like to nominate Dr. Pamela Pugh for the position of Vice President.
Thank you, Dr. Albridge. Are there other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Hearing none. Dr. Pugh, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Ms. Schneider, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous approval.
Congratulations, Dr. Pugh, Vice President Pugh. Nominations are in order for the Office of Secretary. Could I please have nominations for the Office of Secretary?
Dr. Rice?
Dr. Pritchett?
I would like to nominate Tiffany Tilly for the Office of Secretary.
Okay, we have, thank you, Dr. Pritchett, we have a nomination for Tiffany Tilly. Do we have any other nominations? Is Ms. Tilly with us yet? Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
She is very good.
She's joining by phone. Ms. Tilly, can you say hello to us?
Good morning. Hello, everyone.
Good morning, good morning. Do you accept the nomination for Secretary, Ms. Tilly?
Yes, I do.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous approval.
Congratulations, Ms. Tilly. Secretary Tilly?
Thank you. Thank you.
Nominations are in order for the Office of Treasurer. Could I please have nominations for the Office of Treasurer?
Yes, I would like to nominate Tom McMillan for Treasurer.
A nomination for Mr. McMillan. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Mr. McMillan, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. McMillan has accepted the nomination. Ms. Schneider, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous approval.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Treasurer McMillan. The last of the five offices for which nominations are in order is our delegate to the National Association of School Boards of Education. Could I please have nominations for the Office of Delegate to NASB? Ms. Lipton?
Yes, Dr. Rice, I would like to nominate Dr. Judith Pritchett for the Office of NASB Delegate.
I have a nomination for Dr. Pritchett. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none. Dr. Pritchett, do you accept the nomination?
I do accept the nomination.
Okay, all right, very good. We have, we have no General Shermans today. All nominations are in fact being accepted today. If we could have a roll call vote, Ms. Schneider.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous approval.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Congratulations, you are a NASB delegate. Board members, we have our officers. The next item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19. And board members, you are aware that we have done a section on COVID-19 of one sort or another since the pandemic began March of last year. Members of the board, members of the community, I'm going to share briefly on a number of topics today, some related to the immediacy of the pandemic, some related to post-pandemic. On the Open Meetings Act, thanks to legislation approved by a large bipartisan majority in the legislature and signed into law by the governor, we are meeting virtually today and have the ability to do so through March 31. COVID-19 numbers and mitigation efforts. When I updated the board at our December 8 board meeting, we were at 14.9 million cases nationally. By yesterday, we were at 22.5 million cases nationally, an increase of just under 7.6 million cases, or about a 51% increase in the 35 days between board meetings. We've doubled the number of cases in the country in two months from our November 10 board meeting to our January 12 board meeting today. By our December 8 board meeting, we'd had more than 283,000 deaths nationally. By yesterday, we'd had more than 375,000 deaths nationally, an increase of 92,000 deaths, 32% increase in the last 35 days. In Michigan, while there has been an uptick of cases associated with the winter holidays, the growth rate of new cases has declined substantially compared to November. Michigan's cases rose from more than 410,000 at our last board meeting to more than 523,000 yesterday, an increase of 27%, far lower than the 51% increase nationally during the same time, but an increase about which we need to remain vigilant. Just before winter break, Governor Whitmer and Health Department Director Gordon announced that high schools were prepared or permitted to reopen. Last Friday, Governor Whitmer and Chief Medical Officer Dr. Caldune announced that teachers would begin to receive vaccinations on Monday, that is to say, yesterday. Given the flattening case growth rate, the availability of antigen tests for school staff, the beginning of vaccinations, new mitigation guidance, the belief that our mitigation efforts, when followed, are effective, and the importance of in-person instruction, they urged school districts to offer an option for in-person instruction on or before March 1. And board, as you are aware, the majority of districts, the substantial majority of districts, have been open since the beginning of the year. That's different from whether a substantial majority of parents have chosen to send their children to school, but there are some districts that have not yet opened, and it was the governor's exhortation on Friday, along with Dr. Caldune, that they all provide an option for in-person instruction on or before March 1. Brandy Johnson from the governor's office is with us today, as Marilyn Schneider noted, and would be happy to respond to questions that you may have regarding vaccinations or antigen testing. The new Federal Coronavirus Relief Act, the new Relief Act approved by Congress just before Christmas and then signed into law several days thereafter, will be helpful to Michigan students, families, and schools in many ways. Michigan expects to receive approximately a quarter of a billion dollars for childcare over the next, it could be spent over the next two years, approximately $1.6 billion for pre-K-12 schools in the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, that is to say, the SIR-2 fund. School districts will receive roughly four times what they received in the CARES Act eight months ago. And so these federal resources are soon going to be available for our use in the state across the country. They are enormously helpful. I will be talking about them briefly additionally in a few moments. But board members, what I'd like to spend the balance of my time discussing is a reflection about where we ought to be moving, not in the immediacy, not to say today or tomorrow, but as we pivot to a post-pandemic world. In the midst of the pandemic, many people want, as you know, one thing, a return to normal, and who can blame them? In few aspects of our country is this hope for pre-pandemic normalcy more evident than in education. Most of us want a return to all school buildings being open and full of children. We realize now more than ever the power of in-person instruction, all that school can offer. I too want all schools open, not most of our schools as we currently have in this state. Yet a return to pre-pandemic education is not enough. As we plan for next year, as we begin to do every winter about this time, we need to pivot to a new, better normal, not simply back to where we were pre-pandemic. We need to aspire to this higher goal for two reasons. First, many of our children haven't learned as much as they should have in the last year, and we have work to do to catch them up to where they should be. And second, we were improving schools in the years before the pandemic with an understanding that we had, to paraphrase Robert Frost, "miles to go before we sleep." As we aspire to higher goals, we need to be guided by what we knew before the pandemic and what the pandemic has taught us. Board members, as you are aware, our vision for improving public schools is incorporated in our state's new Strategic Education Plan, approved in August by the State Board of Education with input from across the state. This plan includes eight goals, expansion of four-year-old early childhood eligibility, early childhood education to all eligible children, improvement of early literacy, improvement of health, safety, and wellness, the expansion of secondary school programs, increase in graduation rates, increase in post-secondary credential rates, the addressing of the teacher shortage, and provision of adequate and equitable school funding. Over the last several years, Michigan has improved its performance on many of these goals, yet an enormous amount of work remains. It's not just pre-pandemic lessons from which we need to draw and that are incorporated in our state's Strategic Education Plan. We also need to learn from lessons from the pandemic. For example, home technology can be very helpful, but for most children serves best as a support for in-person instruction, not a primary means of instruction. We should continue to narrow and ultimately close the digital divide in the state and nation, not as a substitute for, but rather as a supplement to, public education. Many of our public school partners, board, as you know, have stepped up during the pandemic. Food banks, childcare providers, libraries, and other youth-serving organizations, we salute them. They've done an outstanding job in the midst of the pandemic. Their support of our children and partnership will be even more critical as we seek to provide our children post-pandemic with wraparound services that extend beyond the school day and year. To that point, many students will have received less instruction this year than any year in their schooling. As districts prepare for next year, they need to consider whether all of their students, who are particularly vulnerable groups of students, including children with profound special needs, beginning English learners, and fledgling readers, among others, need more time than the state minimum 180 days and 1,098 hours of instruction. This is a critical consideration. One could argue that all children need more instructional time next year, given that they have all been disrupted in their education to some degree this year. At the barest minimum, especially vulnerable children will need additional services. Child by child, districts will have to reflect on what is needed and how to meet these needs. Children's social and emotional needs, so evident to many of us pre-pandemic, have received added attention during the pandemic. MDE has begun a Social and Emotional Children's Mental Health Network and allocated more than $7 million from its Education Equity Fund for children's mental health to local school districts. Governor Whitmer and the state legislature allocated a similar amount for related services as well. Local school districts have engaged in SEL, Social and Emotional Learning, work this year more than ever before. We need to broaden and deepen our SEL professional development efforts in the coming year. Importantly, however, we need more staffing in this area. All staff members, without exception, need to be trained in and to take responsibility for SEL as we build schools that more substantially serve children's needs. But districts also need more social workers, counselors, nurses, and school psychologists to serve children properly. We also need to reduce our class sizes, especially at the early elementary level, where educators are laying the literacy and math skill foundation that will be necessary for success as students continue in school. Nothing is more critical to the success of young people in school than literacy skills. It was abolitionist Frederick Douglass who wrote, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." We can continue to improve educator knowledge and use of our literacy essentials as a means of improving students' technical knowledge of reading and writing. Additionally, we need to increase student engagement in reading by selecting and sharing more diverse literature representative of who our children are and by extension, who we are as a state and a nation. I'll be discussing this important theme more this afternoon. School funding is another issue, board. Six studies in six years have said the same thing. We underfund Michigan public education to the detriment of our young people. The most comprehensive of these studies, the 2018 School Finance Research Collaborative study, noted that different children have different needs, different needs have different costs. To fully fund Michigan's schoolchildren according to SFRC recommendations, billions of additional dollars are needed. Board, you'll hear about this issue in just a few minutes from Sheila Alice, Kyle Garant, and two members of the School Finance Research Collaborative, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson and Mr. Jim Stapleton. The 2019 MSU School Finance Study noted that from 1995 to 2015, Michigan was last in the country in inflation-adjusted total education revenue increase, and third to last in the country in inflation-adjusted per-student education revenue increase. The last few years, though better on average, haven't permitted significant staffing changes in our schools. The recent Federal Coronavirus Relief Act that I mentioned a few minutes ago will help districts across the state and country, and with nonrecurring funds, will permit many children to benefit from improved services next year. While beneficial, there are limits to these funds, including but not limited to their one-time nature. Of encouragement is President-elect Biden's support of universal preschool, the doubling of the number of social workers, counselors, and psychologists, and large increases in funding for poor children and students with special needs. Whatever materializes needs to be recurring, available to serve children over many years, and not one-and-done funding. Our children's needs endure, so too should their funding. What does each child need? How do we provide it? As educators and policymakers wrestle with the broad policy questions in education, these will be the questions at the local level. We should be under no illusions that these ideas or any significant ideas for improving public education will be easy to drive in their totality. We can accomplish a great deal in the next eight months and lay the groundwork for more substantial improvement in the midterm as we plan for and implement this new, better normal. It can't simply be a return to normal. Our children deserve more and better. Board, those are my reflections. I would be happy to entertain comments or questions at this time. Ms. Lipton?
Dr. Rice, I would like to commend you on your words, so powerful and meaningful, I could not agree more, that no one asked for this crisis, certainly not the children, but we would be remiss as policymakers if we did not take a hard look at where we were before, where we were during, and where we want to be after. So thank you very much for those comments, and I do look forward to working with everyone to create a better normal. One question that I do have is, and you may be addressing this, would be the issue of the first CARES Act funding and the current CARES Act funding. My understanding is that the first CARES Act funding involved a block grant model, and this current funding, it was going to be through Title I. And my understanding is that that will cause some differentials in delivery to school districts because of peculiarities of Title I. Is that the case, and is that something that we need to be, you know, at least prepared for? Or is that just? Or is that just sort of something that I shouldn't be worried about?
Well, it is something that we should focus on, yes. The First CARES Act, actually, let me back up. So there have been five coronavirus relief bills. The CARES Act was the largest of the five in total dollars. The most recent coronavirus relief act is the most substantial from the perspective of public schools. The CARES Act, which was passed in the spring, had what we now call an ESER-1 Fund, an Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESER. And it distributed the dollars, it required the distribution of at least 90% of those dollars by Title I Part A formula, as does this particular coronavirus relief act. There are some nuances. The last act required equitable services for non-publics. This has a pullout for non-publics in a separate section of the voluminous federal act, and it is separate and distinct from ESER. Additionally, the dollars in this coronavirus relief act for public schools are four times that which were in the CARES Act. So while the CARES Act in total was dramatically bigger than this particular relief act, for public schools, the most recent relief act is more substantial. The issue of the Title I Part A formula is real. We will be sharing more with the Board on this issue in the coming month or two, but you point out something that will require some focus and attention in the coming month. I've already had some conversation with our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Dr. Kyle Garant. Mr. Garant, could you do the Deputy Superintendent way for Ms. Lipton so she can meet you on Teams? There you go. And so we will be sharing more on this issue with you in the coming weeks. The Title I Part A formula is helpful in certain regards. Whether it is ideal for the distribution of federal coronavirus relief is a different story. One could argue, I would argue, that there are better formulas to have used for this distribution.
Thank you. And again, I do ditto what Board Member Lipton has said. It was a good report, a lot in there, a lot for us to look forward to. And my question goes to the beginning portions of the report, and I am not sure if we were able to determine if someone, a representative from Department of Health and Human Services or Department or Eagle will be able to present.
So we have been in contact with and partnering with both. In fact, we were in contact with, at a meeting Friday after the press announcement, with Dr. Caldune, Dr. Lyon Callow from MDHHS. You may recall that we had anticipated their presence at a board meeting. They were actually on a board agenda, I want to say, for November, and in the run-up of those pandemic numbers, had to cancel, sort of at the last moment. We continue to be in touch with them, and if there continues to be an interest, we would very much like to have them at the February board meeting.
Yeah, and if I can just, if I can say it, I know that you and Kyle have been working on trying to get them here, but I think that that's very important, and hopefully you all and the governor's office understand the importance of us having that conversation with the Department of Health and Human Service and Eagle. I think, well, I know, it was me who brought Ash Ray to the table, that this board has been able to give some great input and insight. We've not just had emotionally charged discussions around COVID. Yes, we have, but we've also, you know, with our backgrounds, I think that, I know that we've given insight and input that has led to some critical changes and improvements in the guidance that we give to school districts. So I do think that it is very important, as we're talking about this push to return, to have a discussion with the Department of Health and Human Services and Eagle, and we've been waiting for that, and I just would hope to be able to have that conversation. We've had Ash Ray, we've had someone from the school, the networks of school environments, we've talked about someone coming in to have a discussion with us about legislation moving forward that will impact the school environment as it relates to the water and as it relates to the air quality and ventilation, all of that. But I do just hope that they recognize that we are a body that are charged with being a part of these critical decisions for teachers and educators and parents.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I appreciate that, and we will reiterate that in the day or two after this meeting. Mr. Garant took note, as did I. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Questions or comments? Looking and hearing and seeing none? Very good. We're moving on to the next item on our agenda. Next agenda item is the monthly presentation on the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. It is our goal to provide adequate and equitable school funding. Following the presentation, we will engage in further conversation with the Board about the goal to provide adequate and equitable school funding in Michigan. This is an informational presentation. It does not require Board action. Our presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, the Oakland School Superintendent, and an initial co-chair of the School Finance Research Collaborative, and Mr. Jim Stapleton, President and CEO of B&amp;R Consultants, and a member of the School Finance Research Collaborative. There will be two PowerPoint presentations, one by Ms. Alice and Mr. Garant, which is somewhat longer, and the second by Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, Mr. Jim Stapleton, one that is somewhat shorter. Gentle people, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone. Today's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan presentation is the fifth in a series on the goals and metrics included in the state's strategic education plan. As Dr. Rice mentioned, Mr. Kyle Garant and I are pleased to have the opportunity to continue the series of presentations to the State Board of Education. Following our presentation, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson and Mr. Jim Stapleton will share a brief update on the work of the School Finance Research Collaborative, or SFRC. On the next slide, the eight goals included in Michigan's strategic education plan are listed. Previous presentations have included metrics for the following four goals. The first goal on the slide, expand early childhood learning opportunities. The fifth goal, increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. The sixth goal, increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. And the seventh goal, increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. For these four goals, our presentations included multiple years of data sets, and these data sets showed positive improvement trends. Today's presentation will focus on the eighth goal on the slide, provide adequate and equitable school funding. The next three slides include the metrics for this goal. The metrics fall into six different categories and require us to respond to questions rather than to collect and report data sets. The first four categories are poverty, English learners, students with disabilities, and career technical education, or CTE. For these categories, we are asking three questions. Is there a weighted formula for the goal? Does the weighted formula match the School Finance Research Collaborative, or SFRC, recommendation? And what is the difference between the current funding formula as compared to the SFRC recommendation? The other two categories are the Great Start Readiness Program, or GSRP, and transportation. For these two categories, we are going to ask similar questions. Is there a dedicated funding amount? Does a dedicated amount match the SFRC recommendation? And what is the difference between the current funding as compared to the SFRC recommendation? So now I would like to welcome Mr. Kyle Garant to continue today's presentation on the metrics for the adequate and equitable school funding goal.
Thank you, Sheila. Good morning, Board members. A quick backdrop of the School Finance Research Collaborative, the SFRC, January is SFRC's birthday month. The study was released in January of 2018, and the charge that this committee undertook was to determine the true cost of providing quality education in Michigan. Understanding different students have different needs for supports to be successful in school, and those needs have varying costs. The group was comprised of a diverse group of individuals and experts from varying fields, education, business, unions, and philanthropy from across our state, and the group developed weighted funding recommendations. So there is, the SFRC recommends a base weighted cost, a weighted base cost, excuse me, for per student based on district size, and then also includes weights that are added on top of that base cost for students in specific categories that we will walk through shortly. It's important to note that SFRC took into consideration local, state, and federal dollars that can be used or put together, in a sense, stitched together, to pay for these recommendations. On the next slide, we show pre-K 12 funding for the 2018-2019 year. That's the most recent year that we have audited data for, and as I mentioned on the previous slide, there are local, state, and federal revenue incorporated in those funds. So example of local revenue includes local district millages, NISD county-wide millages. At the state level, the primary funding source is school aid, which includes a varying amount of sections ranging from at-risk funding to CTE and other dedicated funding streams, and also federal revenue. So our Title I, Title II, all the title programs, individuals with disabilities, Education Act funding, and other federal resources. And so for the 2018-2019 year, you'd see that there was approximately $18.5 billion in revenue from those three sources. Now, moving forward, we will compare the SFRC funding recommendations and weighted areas, as Ms. Alice mentioned, as they relate to actual 2018-2019 funding. The first weight area is for poverty. Is there a formula for, weighted formula for poverty? The answer is no. There are set-asides such as Section 31A in state dollars and Title 1A at the federal level, but there is no explicit weight funding schools for students in poverty. The approximate difference between what is currently, or in the 2018-19 school year, was funded, or funding streams that would be associated with a poverty weight versus what SFRC recommendation, and that approximate difference is $1.2 billion. The next weight we'll look at is English language learners. Is there a specific weighted formula for English learners? The answer is no. Again, there are set-asides such as Section 41 bilingual education and Title 3A at the federal level, but there is no specific weight for this category. And the approximate difference between what SFRC recommended versus what was available in 2018-2019 is $514 million. The next weighted area is students with disabilities. Again, there is no weighted, specific weighted formula to fund schools for students with disabilities, but there are set-asides both in state and federal revenue and at the local revenue level specifically to support students, costs associated with students with disabilities. The approximate difference between what 2018-19 actual revenue was versus what the SFRC recommendation is for this weighted category is $750 million, or three-quarters of a billion The next weighted area is career and technical education. Is there a weighted formula for CTE programs? The answer is no. There are set-asides both at the state, local, and federal level. It's important to note that at the local level, there is, it's complex in the sense of not all, not all areas of our state have local dedicated millages to fund these programs. And so that is obviously an equity issue for students in parts of our state that do not have a dedicated millage and have access to career and technical education programs. The difference between what was available actually in 2018-19 revenue as compared to the SFRC recommendation is a little over $42 million in approximate difference. The next weighted area, as part of the board goals, is the Great Start Readiness Programs. So there is a dedicated amount per child for GSRP right now. That amount does not match the School Finance Research Collaborative, and to just see in bullet three, it's a little complicated. Right now, we fund school districts at a rate of $7,250 for full-day student experience. If, which, if you look at the MSU Professor Arts and Study in 2018, their recommendation, which SFRC does not mention specifically, in terms of to fund a universal, to fund universal preschool, is at an 80% threshold, so 80% of the four-year-olds in our state would need to be participating in GSRP to reach that definition of universal. If we had 80% of all four-year-olds participating in GSRP, we would need an additional $400 million to fund that cost. In that second, that first sub-bullet, we also identified the amount of money that would be needed to fund the remaining number of four-year-olds in our state who are eligible for GSRP services currently but are not receiving those services. So currently, GSRP has an eligibility threshold of 250% of the federal poverty level to be eligible to participate. If we were to, if we were to reach that 80% goal of those who are eligible based on that federal poverty rate number, it's a difference of 28, a little over 28,000 four-year-olds, and we would need an additional $204 million to fund that. It's also important to note that the SFRC recommendation recommended that we fund districts for full-day experience at a rate of a little over $14,000 per child. If that recommendation were to come to pass, we would, it would require almost a doubling of the numbers above to match those, to be able to fund that increase in what SFRC says is needed for quality early childhood programs. that increase in what SFRC says is needed for quality early childhood programming. The next area is transportation. As the, there is no, the state does not provide specific funding for transportation to school districts. There are set-asides that are for bus driver safety instruction and school bus inspections, but there is no funding source dedicated to helping transport students on a daily basis. The difference, the estimated difference between what was available in 2018-19 and the SFRC recommendation is $424 million. It's important to note that SFRC recommended a specific school transportation cost study be done to further document associated costs. As with other costs in our state, those costs vary, can vary widely based on your geographic location and number of students, or in this case, number of riders on a daily basis. And so again, SFRC recognized that and what that would, what impact that would have on the overall recommended cost for funding schools for transportation and recommended an initial study in this area. On the next slide, you'll see a summary of those weighted areas and the approximate additional funding needed, a little over $3 billion. This number can flexuate based on how, what, and when you account for and a complex set of variables as it relates to school financing. In the end, as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, six school financing studies over the span of the last six years have all come to the same conclusion. Education in Michigan is significantly underfunded, the tune of billions of dollars. On the next slide, you'll see a documenting of efforts to provide adequate and equitable funding. And here, it's really, this is really, I think, an articulation of the fact that policymakers at various levels taken, have understood the need to fund students based on their needs and the supports they need to be successful in schools. And, you know, for instance, during MDE's Education Equity Fund, which is part of the SER one round of grants, we specifically targeted students who, and school districts that had students who fell into weighted categories such as poverty or special education. The goals of those dollars are specifically narrowed to closing the digital divide and providing mental health services and supports for children and adults in those areas. Governor Whitmer's executive budget proposals have taken into account SFRC recommendations, requesting additional funding in those weighted areas, as you can see, for special education, at-risk or poverty, students in poverty, GSRP and CTE. And previous legislative appropriations have also recognized that we are underfunding schools in these areas and that students with different needs need to be funded differently in order to pay for those varying costs associated with helping provide the supports to those students to be successful in school. And with that, I thank you for your time and attention, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Garant, Ms. Alice, and now the drum roll for our next two presenters, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, our superintendent of Oakland Schools, and an initial co-chair of the School Finance Research Collaborative, and Mr. Jim Stapleton, president and CEO of BNR Consultants and a member of the School Finance Research Collaborative. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you, and good morning. We want to thank the state board and the state superintendent and his team for this opportunity to share with you information on a topic that is near and dear to our hearts, adequate and equitable funding for Michigan's children. It is near and dear to us because we know that a child's zip code should not determine the quality of education that they receive in the state of Michigan. Jim?
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and thank you, Dr. Rice, and board members for our time this morning. I think it's important to note from the beginning that the genesis of our work, while it started during the Snyder administration and a need to kind of develop a more robust model of funding, this is by no means a partisan effort, nor is it an effort that's designed to aid or bet one particular region of our state or demographic of our people. This is a problem that is statewide, and speaking from someone who has joined this collaborative from a business perspective and who has had a number of hats, I'll just give you one short example of how this has been a problem that's existed for quite some time and not just recently. Back in the early 2000s, I was blessed to be the COO of the Detroit Tigers for the late great Mike Ilitch, and I remember distinctly having a problem in finding seasonal workers who could have the capacity to handle our games during the summer, who could just simply add, subtract, and run a cash register. Back in the early 2000s, we couldn't find enough quality, or it was hard to find enough quality workers in that regard. So I've come to understand this problem from a number of years, and from a business perspective, it's been my pleasure to be a part of this effort. Wanda?
Next slide, please. Jim?
I think we go to your, yeah, that's the focus slide. I think we go now to your, to your school research. Please come in.
Okay, next slide, please. To improve student performance, you know, we know that we have to change how we fund Michigan schools to meet the needs of all students. So with this in mind, in 2016, the School Research Finance Collaborative was formed. We had members representing, represented statewide, and we were a diverse group of bipartisan members from business, industry, and education. All of these experts agreed that it was time to change the way that we fund education in Michigan. Our task was to complete an adequacy study that answered this question. What does it cost to educate a child attending school in the state of Michigan? This report was completed on January 12th. Today is indeed our birthday. It is the third anniversary of the completion of this report, and it was released to the public on January 17. Now, this report initiated conversation and provided building blocks to look at how we go about getting a new school funding formula, but it was not intended to be completed at that time. This was a start, and there is much, much more work to be completed. Jim?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, as we, as we talk about what our next steps are, and as Dr. Robinson indicated, our work was completed in 18, but ultimately, and I think it was mentioned in one of the earlier presentations, we have a number of areas of focus, not the least of which is transportation. Our number currently in the model that we produced is only $973 per rider, and we know that's drastically, drastically low and inaccurate and will vary from district to district and demographic of our state. So one of the reasons it's important for our political leadership to continue to work towards funding education is because we know as we produce our documentation and data for consideration, transportation and transportation study is the number-one piece that we're going to have to get to. Because ultimately, if we don't fix this problem, ladies and gentlemen, it's going to continue to linger and it's going to continue to put our kids behind. So transportation is our first goal, and I think Wanda will go through the next two initiatives that we think are important.
Yes, and if we can go to the next slide. In addition, we're going to have to look at capital costs for both charter and traditional public schools. This was not addressed in the initial study. We also are going to need to review literate and illiterate poverty and the concentration of poverty by districts. That was not included in our initial study. So again, this study was provided to initiate the conversation and to build those building blocks. Next slide, please. We knew then, and we know now, that this problem won't be fixed overnight, but we are encouraged by the efforts of the state superintendent Rice and his team. When we had an opportunity to look at goal A, the School Research Collaborative was elated. When we saw this goal there and the accompanying metrics, we knew it was the right step and going in the right direction. We look forward to working with all of you to build an adequate and equitable funding structure for Michigan's children, and we thank you for the opportunity to work alongside with you to make this happen. Thank you.
Speaking solely from the business perspective and the business community's invasion of this, Dr. Rice, we know that we are fully engaged and will remain fully engaged to assist in getting the appropriate number for funding our kids as long as it takes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Cook Robinson, Mr. Stapleton, Ms. Alice, Mr. Garant. We have a question and a comment from board member Nikki Snyder.
Sorry, yeah, actually, it's a question and comment from Kyle's presentation, so I don't mind waiting, waiting on that until we finish this discussion.
No, it's fine. It's all, it's all one for Q and A. So, so please.
So my question is, is there anything in the weighted formula for students to perform low-unsanitized testing in a consistent way?
Okay, Mr. Garant, would you like to take that?
Yeah, Dr. Rice, thank you, Ms. Snyder, for the question. There is not a specific weight for focus facility on that area. I think one could argue that with weights for students in poverty and others that there, some of that would be captured in those weighted costs or those weighted funding streams or funding school districts in a way that would support those students who are behind, but there is no specific weight for that.
So, you know, my, my comment is not intended to be adversarial to the concept of equity or weighted people funding, rather that I'm genuinely concerned in that response. I don't want our board to be concerned about some but all. And I know that our board has had a stance on standardized testing in the past, and I think that it's fair to really be concerned about overtesting, what testing, why test. But I think, you know, one of the things I've experienced during COVID is how many parents really do want to know where their kids are at. And when we think about serving students first in a weighted funding model, then we would consider all kids in that respect. So I don't know, I wonder if I, if I think that it would be best that we throw, throw that in there and really include it, at least for parents and students who choose to take the test and end up with this continued need, and then their school district doesn't get the funds to address that need because the funding model doesn't wait for it. So just accepting that we're all coming from a different place right now, we're all struggling with different things. If we don't wait for that, then the parents and students that are struggling just don't get captured at all, and that's really not acceptable. So I'll just throw that out there as a, as a comment to consider, and I hope that we will, as a board and as a department, consider that.
We appreciate the, we appreciate the reflection. I do want to make clear, though, that the children who generate the dollars are not necessarily specifically dollar-for-dollar the children on whom the dollars are used. So for example, there are dollars that would be generated according to the SFRC recommendations, not only for poor children, as Mr. Garant notes, but children with disabilities, English learners. There is a per-rider amount for children who are transported. Those dollars flow into local school districts and would then be available for those young people who have need, including those who, who are struggling in terms of their ability to perform on state assessments. So absolutely, the dollars need to go where there is need. And I think that that, that really was in the spirit of the study. But Dr. Cook Robinson, I'd ask perhaps if you could share additionally on that theme?
Yes, the intent was to look at what was the base cost. And in the study, the base cost was $95.90. And from there, each area, depending on the learner characteristics of those students and the needs of those students in that environment, additional dollars would flow. So the formula does have some flexibility to address that issue. If you have students who are not performing in their environment, would need additional resources in order to meet those standards of achievement, and the funds would be there.
Ms. Lipton, a comment?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to the presenters. I just, just wanted to give a little bit of historical perspective because this has been a very, very long effort. And as Representative McMillan will remember, the very first bill that I introduced when I got to the legislature in 2008, I believe, was the, the bill that the, required the state to conduct a costing-out study. And the reason, and it was the, it took six years to get that bill passed. It was the bill that was passed on my way out. The reason why I bring that up is because it was based on an observation that I had. And I know that I spoke with, with, with many members in the legislature when I was there, that the issue of school funding always focused on, are we spending too much? Are we spending too little? How much should we spend? And when I asked the question, do we know what it takes to educate a child in Michigan? The answer that came back to me from a number of sources is no, we don't know. And so I began a journey to try to find out if there were other states that had looked at it, and the answer was yes, and it all centered around these costing-out studies. Now, what I will say is that in the, in my search to sort of get answers, what I also learned is that the, the current funding model that we have been using since 1992 was both, was, was based on the principle of equality, which is a fine principle, absolutely. Equality is, it has a lot of, it, 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 there is, there is, there is value to that, but we know now that we have to be thinking about equity, and equality and equity are really two different principles. And secondly, the, the, our current funding model is not only based on notions of equality as opposed to equity, but it's also based on the fact that the people that came up, I mean, the very legislators that came up with the current funding model never dealt with the issue of sufficiency. And this came from conversations that I had. The, the, the pie that was in existence was the pie that was dealt with. So the idea of sufficiency of funds, by their own testimony, was always to be dealt with later. Okay, well, we're now in 2020, 2021, okay? And I think over 30 years is enough time to start thinking about cleaning up what the people at the time, you know, they worked hard, did a fine job. But we know now that we have to deal with sufficiency of funding because that's something that they never dealt with, and they knew they didn't deal with it, and they remarked that it was beyond their purview at the time, and that we need to be thinking about equality. The whole point of The whole point of doing the initial costing-out study, which the School Finance Research Collaborative has built on masterfully, was to answer the questions, and you can, at some point, you have to stop asking questions and make a value decision that we now need to deal with issues that were never dealt with. Lastly, and I'll just close by saying that during my time on K-12 appropriations, you know, the funding model is really not very, it's very, very cumbersome because it deals with base costs and then these various categoricals, which having sat in a number of the rooms are always based on, you know, people that can voice concerns. You know, categoricals are good, but they're not a systemic way of dealing with some of the issues that we need to deal with. So I'll just end it there, but I do think it's something that we, as a board, need to weigh in on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton.
Can I make a quick, brief comment?
Mr. Stapleton, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, sufficiency and equity, in many ways, and I don't know if the study has been done on this, comes down to just one particular issue because it does get to the demographic of the population that you're serving. We know from our work that some districts have far more special needs children than other districts, and so as we contemplate how to approach this problem, and even though our solution needs and tends to be global, perhaps there can be work done to figure out where there are more special needs children in our state, because as we look at it, that's a number that has to be flexible because some districts have a greater need than others.
Thank you, Mr. Stapleton. There's no question, some districts have more special needs children and some have more special needs children with more profound needs, and those profound needs have greater costs. The SFRC recommendations included weights for special needs children, 0.7 weight, 70% weight for those with mild handicaps or challenges, 1.15 weight or 115% weight for those with moderate challenges or handicaps, and then a cost reimbursement weight for those with severe challenges or handicaps. So you're absolutely right that the number of special needs children and the mix of special needs in the district will affect the costs associated with addressing those needs. Mr. McMillan, your question?
Yeah, Kyle, did any of the six studies focus on whether districts or the state could use current funding better and make significant suggestions as far as where the status quo could be improved?
Well, SFRC specifically, you know, as I mentioned earlier, took into account that there, you know, there is existing revenue that would be used to fund the weights and to fund the base costs that they identified. So the focus was more on, okay, where are we at right now? And our numbers was 2018, 2019. Where are we at revenue-wise? Where are we at in terms of what the SFRC believed and documented as the differences between what was actually available versus what should be available to fund the needs of students who fall in those different categories, to provide schools the adequate resources, and then what that difference was? So.
Well, I mean, I found that, I mean, I find that they're really reluctant to criticize the status quo usually. They probably wouldn't get their job doing this if they didn't much criticism, but I just was curious if they gave specific, you know, they should, you know, we should reduce overhead and administrative costs by 10% and put that into the classroom or, you know, based on, I have a feeling they probably didn't suggest anything like that, right?
There are not specific dollar recommendations related to the questions that you asked, no.
Right. And then are you aware of any of the studies that these six firms have ever done for any other states that showed that large amounts of money wasn't needed to be taken from taxpayers' pockets for additional public school funding? In other words, are they always, from what I have gathered, they're pretty much always, you know, more is needed? Is that true? Are you aware of any of these studies that, or any of these firms that have concluded that a state is funding adequately or maybe overfunding public schools?
I think the takeaway from those six studies, as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, and Professor Artson's study, is a recognition of the lack of underfunding that has been persistent over time. I don't know that there's a specific group, Augen, Blick, or SFRC, that are taking into account wildly different variables to get to the same outcome or the same endpoint, which is the severe underfunding.
Right. I just meant in other states, Nebraska, you know, whatever, Nebraska, Massachusetts, have they ever, are you aware of any other study that has ever said that actually, you know, this state is not needing to take more money out of taxpayers' pockets, that they're adequately funded? I suspect that nobody has ever heard of a study like that from these six firms.
The studies tend to be in states where policymakers perceive an underfunding. They're not necessarily, as a rule, done in states where there is a perception of sufficient funding. So they start from the perspective of need and seek a study. I think the point of six studies in six years is the fact that there's a triangulation around a particular result. Note that the first of these six studies, not the first study that was commissioned, which is the one to which Ms. Lipton referred, Mr. McMillan, but the first study to be completed was an Upjohn Institute study. They didn't receive money to do the study. They did a Joe Friday, Jack Webb study in 2015 and determined what they determined. The second study to be completed was the study to which Ms. Lipton referred, the first one to be commissioned, that was finished in 2016. In 2017, then Lieutenant Governor Calley, a Republican, did a study on special education, including special education funding, and indicated that the underfunding of special education in the state was between 2/3 and 3/4 of a billion dollars. So again, I think that there's a triangulation of results of these studies. I don't think it's necessarily a function of having gotten a contract to do a study. President Albridge?
Well, I'm still got the floor.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, I certainly agree that special ed, special needs students probably are underfunded, and I think that shifting money from one to another without taking additional money out of taxpayers' pockets could be done. I guess, you know, your comments, though, pretty much, you know, are in line with what I was thinking, that these studies, the outcomes were already expected. I think if they, you know, you said that it's in areas where it's expected to, that there's underfunding. So if they would have concluded that there isn't underfunding, they probably wouldn't have been hired, or they probably wouldn't be hired for their future, so it would damage their business model. So I, you know, that's just, it kind of confirms that it was already predetermined what the answers were going to be when these studies were commissioned. So thank you.
You bet. Dr. Cook Robinson, and then to President Albridge and Vice President Pugh and Ms. Snyder.
Yes, I just wanted to share that when we started the School Research Finance Collaborative, we did not have an answer in mind. We started that study to answer the question, what does it cost to educate a child in the state of Michigan? And we found at that time, and that was three years ago, so we'll probably need a little refreshment, it was $95.90, $9,590. And then looking at what students need, again, because this is a student-centered model, how much additional? And then, at that point, when those numbers were identified, we looked at where we are. And that is the reason that we are so excited about what Superintendent Rice has done. He's looking at what did the study find, and where are we, and what is the difference? But I want, for the record, to state that the School Research Collaborative did not start with the notion that we need more money. We started with the notion of finding out what does it cost, and then looking at learning characteristics to support additional costs for those students to have an equitable quality learning experience, regardless of where they lived in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson, President Albridge, Vice President Pugh.
I think Ellen was in front of me, but Ellen, do you want to wait until after, or do you want to go?
I thought she had picked up her comment, but if not, we can pivot to Ms. Lipton. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that the reason why I brought in the historical perspective is because I wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page, that even before the School Finance Research Collaborative, the state debated for six years whether it was time to do a comprehensive costing-out study of what the cost, based on our current expectations for children. So if you go back and read the language of the law that Governor Snyder signed, that won a majority of both houses in the legislature, at a time when one, you know, when this was something that was foremost in people's minds, that the state wanted an answer to the question, and it is an apolitical question. It was simply, and I can answer this because it was based on a bill that I drafted, was a simple, what I thought was a simple question of what is the true cost of educating a child in Michigan? Studies have based on different components and have sprung from that, but you have to go back to the original legislation that was signed into law by Governor Snyder and was debated for six years by both houses, in the House and Senate, and was ultimately decreed by them that the state would pick, do an RFP, and pick who would do the study, which is what happened. And I would encourage every board member, in addition to reading the SFRC, but to go back and read the study that was originally adopted, commissioned, ordered, decreed, however you want to describe it, by the state of Michigan, by our legislature, and by our former governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. President Albridge.
So I appreciate the comments by both Dr. Cook Robinson and Ellen Cogan-Lipton, because motivations definitely matter. And there are organizations in both the state and at the federal level that create research based on getting the answer that they want. So they decide what is the answer we want, and then they base a research project around that. That is not real research. That is propaganda. A real research project starts with a research question and then finds the answer to that question. And so I appreciate that both of you kind of reiterated that there was a research question involved here, and then a study was developed to find the answer to it, not a study developed to find the answer to the answer that we want. I also agree with Mr. McMillan that there are two ways to look at funding. There's, do we need additional funding, or is there a way to spend money that we have now in a more effective and efficient manner? And in order to do that, it would require the state to start having some real tough conversations about current policy and the way we operate our public school system today. So for example, a state with a near 20-year decline in student enrollment should probably look at whether or not we need to continue opening more schools every year. That's a tough conversation to have, and it's one that this state has not been willing to have up until this point. So if you are offended by the idea that there might need to be more money going into education, and you think that maybe we have a lot of overhead and administrative cost, I would suggest that maybe we look at public policy that is allowing for that kind of administrative overhead cost, in the fact that we keep opening more schools despite the fact that we have fewer students to educate. So if we're willing to have that conversation, I am all for it. I think we should have that conversation, and I am ready to start today. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge, Vice President Pugh, and then Ms. Snyder. You're on mute, I think. Nope, still on mute.
Okay, my finger's moving. Okay. Good points, Ellen, Cassandra, Dr. Cook Robinson. And I just want to just echo what you all were saying, and just from a different angle. Sometimes reports just bear out truth. And unfortunately, within our education system, we have a system that was built on inequity to Ellen's point. And so even if we are improving upon funding our schools, there are gaps that will continue to exist for certain populations, particularly populations of color. We know that we have systems that were built on racism. They were built on just not, our schools not getting the funding that they adequately needed. And so as we get information on where we should be, we know that we are going to be grossly behind, particularly in communities where, again, we have those systems that were set in place that did not allow schools to, we have decades where schools were not adequately funded. So we have a lot of catch-up, catching up to be made. And again, you know, sometimes the science is inconvenient, but sometimes it bears truth. And to me, I think it's surprising that we would be surprised that in many districts throughout this country, we're seeing this, particularly in communities where there are children of color and the special needs children.
Thank you, Vice President Pugh. Ms. Snyder, and then Ms. Lipton.
I just wanted to say, you know, the discussion is very full. There's been much work that's been done that I definitely appreciate as we discuss equity and continue to work towards it. And the history, Ellen, is very, you know, appreciated as well. I think it's significant to every discussion we have. I just, you know, want to reiterate and almost clarify and confirm, you know, even in the midst of all of this discussion and how long it's been in the making, I just, I can't, in good conscience, put it out there without really suggesting and really firmly suggesting that we can't say that this weighted funding model addresses each student's needs regardless of what zip code you live in. If you could be academically performing low in a consistent way and struggling, but your district isn't going to get the funding according to that model to address the needs that you have, it's just, we cannot put that out today with that in the spirit of equity without admitting that. I mean, it's just, it's a big deal. It's a very, very, very big deal. We're all here to serve all kids. We have to acknowledge that. We can't just capture some, we have to capture all.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton.
Yes, just one final comment that, that I think that this body is in a very unique perspective to provide some leadership on an issue that has been in the hands of the legislature, as I said. legislature, as I said, for a long time. The concept has been looked at. And I think that we could provide some leadership in terms of a model that might be better than the model that we have. Of course, it will be up to the legislature to decide whether or not to adopt it. But in my experience, it is a very, very large and daunting problem for a lot of legislators. And I think that we could provide some leadership and guidance on how we could have a funding formula. Again, back when Proposal A was debated, the people, good people, very much wanted to achieve the spirit of equality. But again, we know now that we should be aspiring toward equity in a funding formula. And we can do that. I believe we can achieve that by not necessarily tearing down everything, but by building on what we have and just do it a little bit more thoughtfully, a little better. And of course, with the knowledge of now what we know, what are the true cost pressures on getting every child in the state an excellent education so that they can fulfill their dreams and aspirations? And a base funding formula with these sort of sporadic categoricals that oftentimes get funded one year, don't get funded another year, is really a very, very inefficient way to do it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
And I'll just say, and hopefully what is my final comments on the issue is, and I'm not sure if I completely understood what Nikki was saying, but as it relates to addressing the needs of all children, you, I totally agree. We are here to address the needs of all children. I think when we talk about, or me in particular, when I talk about groups and sectors of children, we know that those are children who are hardest hit. And from a mathematical standpoint, when we look at how we're doing as a state, all of that is captured. We're looking at all of that together. So the only way that we can pull ourselves up as a state is by addressing those children who are most at need. So I do think, I do agree, we are all, we're thinking about all children. But when we specify and look at and hone in on certain populations, we are thinking about bringing everybody up by addressing those particular children.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? If there aren't, I'd just like to say three other things. First of all, I do think it's been a rich conversation and a helpful conversation. I think we need more of these conversations, not simply at the state board table, but within the state as we work to better support our children. Six studies in six years. They weren't by necessarily partisan warriors. They weren't even by people who were partisan in most cases. The 2015 study was done by an economic institute pro bono. The 2019 study was done by MSU. The 2020 study was done by Ed Trust Midwest, which had never weighed in on funding prior to that study, but determined ultimately that the ability to drive the needs of all children in public schools were undermined by the relative absence of funding of sufficient resources in the state of Michigan. Six studies in six years, one of which was chaired by the former Republican Lieutenant Governor. I would like to say, you know, to the issue of partisanship, I'm not sure this is necessarily a partisan issue. There are those that may have particular leanings in one way or another. But the reality is, is that former Governor Snyder pushed for very large increases in the state-funded Great Start Readiness Program, doubled the number of slots in the state over just a couple of year period of time, did more for doubling, in doubling the number of preschool slots in the state than anyone else in the state in the history of that GSRP program. Now, we have a lot of work still to do, but I don't think that that was a partisan act. I think increasingly, there's an understanding on both sides of the aisle of the value of pre-kindergarten. There's a 55-year body of history that goes from the Perry Preschool High Scope Study in Ypsilanti, straightforward to the present day. By the way, we're still tracking those preschoolers from Ypsilanti as they're in their 50s and their 60s and looking at the outcomes on them of that preschool experience. Governor Snyder also advocated for increases in Section 31A funding, at-risk student funding. And Mr. Garant noted on several occasions, the increases that have been recommended in executive budgets of Governor Whitmer in her first two years in office. So I'm not so sure that this is fully a partisan issue. There may be some partisan lines, yes, but I don't believe that it's strictly speaking of a partisan issue. And then the only other thing that I'd like to share is just one clarification that the dollars, the children who generate dollars and the children for whom the dollars are used are not precisely toggle switch. We used to do that in federal Title I funding for years. Dr. Cook Robinson may remember back in the day where you had to segregate children who were using Title I dollars and that they would be required to go down to Title I rooms to receive pullout services. But that really hasn't been the way we serve children as a rule in these grant programs for about the last 25 years. School-wide projects for Title I dollars, if you have more than 40% of your children that are free or reduced-price lunch eligible, those title dollars can be spent on all children in a school, not just particular children in a school. So the dollars that are generated by some end up helping all in a school. And I just wanted to clarify that because I think that that's important to note. This has been to a number of people's reflection, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Pugh. This has been a rich conversation. We're going to keep it going. I appreciate our presenters, Ms. Alice, Mr. Garant, Dr. Cook Robinson, Mr. Stapleton. Thank you very much for your presentation today and your participation today. Have a great one. Thank you. We'll move on in our agenda, board members. The next agenda item is a presentation on proposed standards for the preparation of elementary and secondary, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and central office school administrators. The proposed standards for the preparation of elementary and secondary PK-12 and central office administrators would replace the current Michigan Administrator Preparation Standards, which are aligned with the now-retired standards from the Educational Leadership Constituency Council. Say that five times quickly. This update will inform program development and continuous improvement efforts at Michigan's educator preparation institutions. This presentation will be followed by a period of public comment and requests for board approval of the standards in June 2021. Our presenters are Dr. Bill Pearson, interim Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports; Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Sean Cockkey, Education Consultant Manager in the Office of Educator Excellence; and Dr. Gina Garner, Higher Education Consultant in the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to present the proposed standards for the preparation of elementary and secondary PK-12 and central office school administrators. In order to prepare high-quality Michigan educators, we are recommending the adoption of new standards for administrators. These new standards will inform program development and continuous improvement efforts at Michigan Educator Preparation Institution. As Dr. Rice mentioned, we have three people from the Office of Educator Excellence who will provide a presentation and answer questions. Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, will provide and begin the presentation. Ms. Breen?
Thank you. Good morning, State Board of Education members. And I'd like to extend a welcome to our two newest members. As Dr. Pearson mentioned, we're presenting the standards to you here today. And I'm actually going to turn it over directly to Sean and Gina to run through the presentation for you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to our new members and say welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. And my name is Sean Cockkey, Manager of the Educator Preparation Unit. Welcome to our new board members. For those, as a way of introduction, we do all things teacher preparation and educator preparation in our unit, from creating the, developing new standards and developing the assessments that go with them for all of the fields in which we license educators. I'm going to turn the presentation of the material in our PowerPoint to Dr. Gina Garner, who is our lead consultant on this standards work.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to present our new standards that are proposed for the preparation of elementary and secondary K-12 administrators and central office administrators. Current administrator preparation standards are based on national standards, as Dr. Rice noted, called the Educational Leadership Constituent Council standards. Those standards are no longer operational. That standard set was revised by the National Policy Board for Educational Administration in 2018 to reflect new challenges and expectations that face current administrators. Preparation programs connected to the NPBEA drove the next step by asking the Michigan Department of Education when we would address that our current standards no longer reflected the national standards. When we realized that, we realized it was time to examine where we are and determine whether any changes were needed in the administrative preparation to better equip our administrators to address modern challenges. So who was involved in this update? We had multiple perspectives provided by stakeholders from across the state, including the Upper Peninsula. Preparation providers, including our alternative route preparation providers for our educational administrators, were represented, and our state administrative professional organizations were also represented. Additionally, a teacher served on our committee to provide educator perspective. Participants were either actively engaged in our group's conversations, or they provided feedback to the group. A full list of these stakeholders is available in your packet. Some of the non-negotiables that MDE provided to this stakeholder group were concepts that should be addressed through the standards process. They included a focus on how any decisions will affect Michigan's PK-12 students. That is our primary non-negotiable for any of our stakeholder groups. We also have an expectation that administrative preparation will be clinically based or provided with extensive field experiences, and that administrators who emerge from these programs will have cultural competence and the knowledge base to perform quality evaluations, provide instructional leadership, and support equitable access to education for all students. The charge of the standards committee was to initially review Michigan's current standards as well as the revised national standards. Their initial decision was to determine whether Michigan's standards required updating or whether they would be adequate. If that update was needed, they were then to consider how that update should occur. They could adopt national standards as a whole, adapt a national standard set for Michigan as a specific context, or draft completely new and unique standards for Michigan administrators. The standards committee, after 10 months of work and conversation, made a recommendation to adopt the National Educational Leadership Preparation Standards as a whole for our Michigan Key areas of emphasis for these proposed standards are areas that the committee was particularly engaged in. As equity was a non-negotiable, the committee found a focus on equity across many of these standards, including creating a district or school mission and vision with an equity focus and supporting equitable access to educational supports and opportunities. Other areas focus on using data to drive continuous improvement and instructional decision-making. Administrative instructional leadership across content and specialty areas, including curriculum review and development for central office administrators, connects with building the professional capacity for leaders in both central office and building administrators, and leading others to build their own professional capacity. Finally, these standards are, they contain an inclusive, or the drive to create an inclusive school culture that is culturally responsive to students and families in order to build those relationships necessary to promote learning and academic success. Key shifts between the current and proposed standards include a new standard on community leadership that looks to educational leaders to not just create that community within their school building, but also to reach out and include diverse members of the community that can come and support the school or the district. There are also increased clinical hour requirements over a six-month period, from 216 minimum hours to 240 minimum hours for candidates to learn under the guidance of mentors. Finally, a shift in the language of the stems came from being responsible for the well-being of children, which is where our current standards stem, to adding the adults in the building as well, creating a fully inclusive responsibility for all of the beings working in a school or a school district, extending the commitment to create a learning community. The eight standards that the NLPs provide are as follows. Standard number one is mission, vision, and improvement. It looks for leaders to develop a mission and a vision for a school or a school district and have data-driven school improvement processes. For ethics and professional norms, these standards look for our leaders to model professional dispositions and norms for the school community, both within and outside of the school, and to be able to make those critical ethical and legal decisions for school community and district communities. Our third standard is equity, inclusiveness, and cultural responsiveness. This standard supports building relationships with families, students, and communities to support academic achievement for all students in a school. An example of this is using data to cultivate and advocate for a supportive and inclusive school culture, for supportive and inclusive school culture instruction, and for behavior support practices. Curriculum supports in learning and instruction are for both academic and non-academic student programs. This also includes instructional leadership for high-quality instructional practices that include digital instruction, digital literacy, data-informed instructional improvement, and developing systemic, coherent assessment and data systems. Our fifth standard is community and external leadership. This includes engaging with advocating for diverse families, cultivating relationships with diverse community members and partners, and benefiting school, district, community advocacy, also being able to communicate and advocate for the needs of the school and the community. Sixth standard with operations and management allows capacity to improve operating systems, including data-informed school resource plans, adhering to laws and policies, maintaining operating systems that promote student learning, and maintaining and developing resourcing plans that support school improvement and promote student and adult success. Our seventh standard really looks at building professional capacity, which includes engaging staff in the development of professional and collaborative learning. staff in the development of professional and collaborative learning, creating a professional learning culture. This includes recruitment, hiring, and the professional development of educators, and conducting effective educator evaluations to promote school improvement and student success. Finally, standard eight is the internship standard, and it includes option, opportunities for candidates to then demonstrate what they've learned from standards one through seven in an extended internship that extends over a six-month period minimally, under the guidance of a mentor. Our next steps for this process is to start public comment, which would begin at the end of this week through the end of February. The committee will then review and resolve those comments and present a final presentation to the State Board of Education in June. All currently approved administrative programs would then, if the standards were to pass, revise and submit their programs demonstrating alignment to the new standards. For more information regarding these standards, you can contact Dr. Kotke or myself, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pearson, Ms. Breen, Dr. Kotke, and Dr. Garner. It's like a veritable doctor's office here. Dr. Albrecht and Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, and I look forward to seeing some of the public comment come back for these. I have two quick questions, and so I'll just ask them both, and then you guys can decide who to answer. First, the term administrator is used differently across areas, across institutions. So is there, is it possible to define who exactly these standards would apply to in the education field? And then, secondly, while I understand the need for an internship, and I think it's always great to have a hands-on experience, have you found that the requirement of an internship is actually a barrier for teachers who want to move into a different area in education?
So who among our august body would like to address those two questions?
Can you answer the first question?
Sure, I'm happy to. So the requirement for who has to hold a school administrator's certificate, which is what these standards are for, is in law. It's superintendent, school principal, assistant principal, and the individuals that are, with the different title that are performing the functions of those positions. So if I am acting as a superintendent, but perhaps I'm called something else, like a director, I also have to have a school administrator's certificate. And anyone who is administering instructional programs, which is kind of a blanket term that is used. And so most schools are aware of the requirement. If they have questions, they typically call us to determine whether or not an individual for a particular role needs to have the school administrator certification.
Okay, thank you very much.
I can take the second question. Is that okay? You know, I guess it would depend on, in terms of internship, how we would develop the parameters of what would encompass that internship. So I think what you're getting at is if you had to, you know, leave your current position and then come back to your position after a sense of internship, that may be a problem. I'm not sure that's where we're going or what we're saying. I mean, it's a possibility, but I think that you could continue to operate in your position that you're currently in, if a person wants to be an administrator, and then get the internship, get what's needed, and it would just determine, it would be depending upon what the qualifications are and what we decide that internship would be, you know, how it will be done. And I think it's needed. You know, mentoring and internships are, would be really helpful for a lot of administrators, specifically today, when there seems to be not only a shortage with teachers, but there is also, I think, a shortage of qualified administrators, and I think this would help us provide better administrators for all kids in the state.
Okay, all right. Dr. Albrecht, any follow-up on that? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Breen, Dr. Pearson. Mr. McMillan, a question?
Yeah, I guess I might have missed, you know, I thought we were talking about standards, but we're also talking about licensing, because standards, to me, are things that don't necessarily aren't requirements, unless they're on a test somewhere. And so are we talking about these standards could exclude people, or are they more recommendations?
Ms. Breen, we're here.
Yeah, so the, when we prepare teachers, every credential that we issue is based on a set of standards. So the teacher preparation programs adopt those standards. They ensure that the programs deliver content in those standards, and those standards are assessed as a component of getting an initial certificate or endorsement in Michigan.
So I'm talking about administrators, I'm sorry.
Right, so same with administrators. So these, I was trying to provide context, because you've seen other standards before. So these standards are a requirement of the school administrator program for receiving a school administrator's certificate for the state of Michigan.
Okay, so they have to be certified before they can have a job as an administrator?
Yes, it's required by law.
Can I, can I speak to the, I mean, there's no question but that you have to ultimately have certification. Can you speak, though, to sequencing? Because there are people whose sequencing is a little bit different at times. People that are hired, engage in a program in order to get the requisite certification, and though it is somewhat exceptional, it nonetheless exists. I think it bears mention.
Yes, that's correct. We do have a school administrator's certificate, and there is a time period with which you are allowed to enroll in a program and work as a school administrator while you're obtaining your certification in Michigan. We also have, as a component of the legislation, school administrators that were grand-parented into the legislation. So if you were an acting school administrator before, oh gosh, 2004? No, 10? 10, 2010, you could, you need still be a school administrator without having to obtain your administrator's certification. It's a newer component of legislation.
As a, as a rule, though, Mr. McMillan, point, the point is, is that certification precedes employment in a given field.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's a way for the state to, I mean, require this, it's a way that people have to get permission from the state to get a job. I just...
Well, it's a, it's a way to do our best to ensure quality of the people who occupy particular positions. There are those of us, including me, who feel like we can improve upon the professionalism in all fields by strengthening not only what people do prior to entering those fields, but also what they have to do once they're in those fields, the mentoring, the professional development, the consistent work on raising, raising our professionalism, raising our games. And that's not a swipe at any person or people or any particular profession or professions. It's simply an acknowledgement of the value of mentoring, of training, of professional development. I have found this enormously helpful for myself. Others have similarly spoken for, I don't know that it's necessarily a state interest per se in, I think it, the state interest is in the quality of administrators in this case, not in necessarily an "I'm in charge" or "we're in charge" moment, but rather the quality of people who are in superintendent positions, principalships, assistant principalships, positions of people who are responsible for the oversight of instruction in the state. It's the same argument that we have for teacher certification, that there's a value to the inculcation process. Everyone doesn't necessarily agree, but I have found that, as a rule, you do better if you've prepared for the experience than if you haven't. And as a rule, you do better if, along the way, you are mentored and you are professionally developed in the experience, is I think we're, we've never fully arrived. But anyway, it's just a reflection. Your additional thoughts, Mr. McMillan, or questions?
No, I've just seen that licensing can be used as a weapon if you don't toe the line exactly as, as kind of those in power want, which we have seen this last eight or nine months. So, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you bet. Thank you. Dr. Pritchett, a comment?
Thank you. To the team, first of all, thank you for the presentation. So when these standards are approved, then our universities and preparation institutions across the state of Michigan will adopt those standards also and implement them into their current programs. So I just kind of wanted to follow through with, okay, what happens when we approve the standards? That, that is, in essence, what happens. And I agree with Dr. Pearson. We do have a teacher shortage in the state of Michigan. We've talked about that a lot as we need to, but we also have an administrator shortage, which is probably not too surprising, because if this group is struggling, then, then you will probably have the administrator shortage come shortly behind, because many times it is out of the educator ranks, the teaching ranks, that individuals decide, well, maybe I'd like a different position. I still want to remain in the school building, or certainly remain in education. So I guess I'm wondering, do you have any data on whether we are experiencing that to the point where we have schools that either don't have, and I'm going to use this as an example, have a principal, or whose principal is in place and is on emergency cert at this point, or whatever the department would be calling that, in order to make sure that there's someone in charge in the building? Do we have any data on that at all? I know you gave us some, some great presentations last month on teacher shortage. I guess the question now is, gets begged about administrator shortage, and I can say that three times without stopping, so anyway.
Yeah, I can answer that if I may.
Please, yes.
So I would tell you that school administrator is one of the few areas that is currently not on our critical shortage list, although a couple of categories of school administrator are there for regional. For example, chief financial officer and human resources director, we have had school districts ask for those to be added so they could hire retirees. Typically, what we see in the field is that when positions vacate, if they are looking for a new superintendent, new principal, they'll often hire retirees temporarily, and we have a permit for that for about six months if those people aren't certified to be able to fill those roles. Often, the permits that are used are to build up teachers that are transitioning into roles from within district, and so they, they work in those roles to give them time to transition to the school administrator's certificate. So that's a long way of saying we don't have any major indications that this is a large shortage, but they definitely are growing people internally sometimes to fill these positions.
What I think, I think the, the other thing that needs to be reflected upon is that there's, it's one thing to have someone who will volunteer to serve in a particular capacity. It's another thing to have the requisite quality to serve in that capacity. Are you sufficiently educated, trained, mentored, professionally developed, supported over, over a period of time? Particularly individuals in their early years in a position, the early years in teaching, you know, the first year or second year for teachers, the same for the principalship, the superintendency. They're very, very difficult, and they require not just the training on the front end, but the mentoring during the moment, really, really, really critical. You can have some quality people engaged in those professions who struggle mightily, not because of their inherent incapacity, but rather because of a lack of support in the, in the moment. So we really have to be about not only training people up on the front end, but also supporting them subsequently on the, on the back end, and that's, you know, it's a, it's a lot of conversation. Board, I look forward to actually engaging you in our legislative committee on this issue, as we reflect upon how we do, what we do with the legislature in the coming two-year term, because I do have some ideas in this area. Are there other questions or comments for our, our august body? I've worked that into the conversation twice this morning. I'm very, very pleased. I'm not sure how to get the, the other months into the conversation, but I've managed to get one of the 12 in with a somewhat different pronunciation. Going once and twice, other reflections? Okay, so our next steps on this will be to put this out for public comment, to get public comment, to synthesize that public comment, to reflect upon how we want to alter our recommendation for the board, if at all, based on public comment, to share that public comment with the board, and ultimately bring back to the board in the late spring, if I recall correctly, in June, these standards for approval in some form. All right? Board, your last opportunity for a bite at the apple, going once and twice and thrice. Can't say a guy didn't try. Thank you very much, presenters. We appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you.
It is, Board, it is 11:41, and what I would like to suggest, because you've done such a, an outstanding job in the last two and a quarter hours, I'd like to suggest lunch. Recession here, returning at 12:45. We'll juggle our beginning of the lunch session, of the post-lunch session, a little bit, making sure that we begin public comment as close to 1 o'clock as possible. So we will reconvene at 12:45, handle a couple of elements from 12:45 until 1:00, public comment at 1 o'clock. Have a good lunch. See you at 12:45. Thank you.